Great, I'm ready to call this December fourteenth business meeting to order. So please rise for the flag salute. Ready, begin. All right, and we have no district highlight tonight. Uh, number three is suggestions and comments from the audience. So is anybody here to speak? All right, so we'll pass through that. We had no emailed. Comments either, good. Okay. So we'll jump to number four, and I'm going to hand that off to Superintendent McKay for the oath of office for the newly elected and renewals.
Going to stand up and be formal tonight because this is a very formal activity that you're going to partake in those that are newly elected and reelected. So we will start right here with you, Sarah. This is the oath of office. This is what all elected officials take specifically to school board members. These are for the oath of office. Uh, for those who are reelected or newly elected. Please repeat after me, Sarah. I state your name. You solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States. And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington. And I will faithfully and impartially perform and discharge the duties of the Office of School Director of Seala School District Number One Nineteen. According to the law, to the best of my ability. Thank you. Mr. Peters, please rise. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States. And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington. And that I will faithfully and impartially perform and discharge the duties of the Office of School Director of Seala School District Number One Nineteen. According to the law, to the best of my ability. Thank you, Mr. Peters. Mr. Iverson. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States. And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington. And that I will faithfully and impartially perform and discharge the duties of the Office of School Director of Seala School District Number One Nineteen. According to law, to the best of my ability. Thank you. Congratulations on your reelection. Conglad- congratulations on your election and welcome to the board.
Yep, welcome back, Joe and Sarah, and welcome, Derek. So we've got this board intact most likely for at least the next couple of years, and then we'll have another, uh, cycle where in two years from now, uh, there'll be a couple of us that'll be up for reelection again, so. Jump into approval of the meeting minutes. We've all had a chance to review the meeting minutes from November sixteenth and twenty-second. So I'll accept a motion to approve those, and then we can have some discussion.
I'll move that we approve the regular meeting minutes from November sixteenth, November twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three.
Do we have any discussion on those? All right, all in favor of approving those minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hey. We're going to hand it off to Superintendent again for the election. No, am I running? You're running this. Yes, all right. Yes, I did.
So according to, uh, District Policy twelve-ten, each December, the board reelects amongst its members a president and vice president. That is an annual. So they are doing this for the two thousand and twenty-four year, and with that, we start with nominations for president. So with that being said, I will open up nominations for the position of president. Please remember as we do this, when we get to the voting part of this for not only the president but vice president, this will be a roll call vote, so I will call on you individually.
I'd like to nominate Dan Peters as board president.
Any other nominations? We will do the roll call vote with the nomination of Mr. Dan Peters for president. Mr. Katron.
Yes?
Board member Michael.
Yes.
Board member Morford. Board member Iverson. Board member Peters.
Yes.
Let the record show that a five-o vote for Board Member Peters to be the president for two thousand and twenty-four. Moving on, we are now opening up nominations for the position of Board Vice President for two thousand and twenty-four. Nominations are now open. There are no other nominations. The nomination for Mr. Morford is on the table. We will take the vote. Board Member Katron. Board Member Michael.
Yes.
Board Member Peters.
Yes.
Board Member Iverson. Board Member Morford. Let the record show a five-o vote for Vice President, Mr. Jamie Morford. That will conclude our, uh, organizational meeting for this evening. Uh, in even numbered years, we would select a legislative rep, but this being not an even number year when we do this, we will wait a year. So with that, we will move on. Uh, we will transition the agenda as well at this time. Now that we have an elected president, that will transition right to Board Member Peters. So Board Member Peters, we are on the consent agenda. The floor is yours.
Great, so my understanding is we'll walk through, uh, items B, C, and D, oh, and E. Uh, and at the end of that, we'll have a motion to approve the entire consent agenda, uh, and then a vote on that, on that motion. So, uh, I think we'll start with the Human Resources Action Sheet. Uh, Chris, do you have any information for us on the HR action sheet?
As you can see, not a lot of action yet. Um, as we move into the first part of two thousand and twenty-four, we'll begin to see more resignations and retirements. It's typically, uh, when we start to see more activity with our Human Resources Action Sheet. Uh, you, we've had a few positions hired since the start of the school year, not many though. We're looking at all positions as they come open to see, you know, which are essential and which aren't. So, um, that's all I have to report on the Human Resources Action.
Chris, can I ask you one question on that?
Yes.
Oh, Ms. Peters has resigned.
Yes.
It seemed like she had a pretty good, she kind of ran that sports med program. So kind of backup plan with that, what are we kind of thinking? We, hiring process, or do we have some staff that she's kind of brought along as well that can handle some of that?
We're gonna definitely need to get it posted soon. It's a big position to fill. Um, very important program and also goes along, what goes along with that is our athletic trainer position. So it's going to be critical for us to get that out there. I am, as far as in district, potential applicants, I'm not aware of any. Alicia, Kevin, not aware of any?
It's a very unique position, at times hard to fill, requires a significant background in, in sports medicine, physical therapy, as well as the instructional part of the teaching. So, uh, there are, uh, the, the need for having, um, trainers or sports medicine people on staff is becoming more and more prevalent across school districts, which means it's more and more prevalent to find applicants. But it will be, it will be, it'll be a challenge to replace somebody like Courtney for sure.
It'd be kind of, kind of have the infrastructure set up with some of the equipment and stuff that we purchased and how, and it's really dug into that program they're involved.
Might we need to separate that into two positions?
That's a, that's definitely a possibility. Our hope, we, we find somebody similar to that, but it's going to be difficult and, and in turn, then you may find, uh, somebody to teach the coursework and then somebody also to supervise the students and provide the, the sports medicine on the, at the games and practices and so forth. That is a model that is used in other school districts.
Okay, great. I think our next item is the payroll goods and services for December of two thousand and twenty-three. Are there any items there that we should be paying special attention to?
Yes, I have a couple of highlights tonight. Um, Derek, uh, just for your information, I think we talked briefly about this, but each meeting, um, we, we take a look at the HR actions, see if there's anything that we want to highlight. We also look at the payroll goods and services. Um, I used to work for the State Auditor's Office years ago, so I put my auditing hat on when I review all of these and I highlight ones that I have a question, or maybe I think somebody might have a question about, and those are the ones that I, I bring up. And I typically only highlight a couple of different expenditures each meeting in the interest of time. You can see, um, one expenditure, uh, to Belfour USA Group Inc., um, is for fifty thousand oh ninety-six. Uh, you may wonder what that is. That is payment to Belfour for when we had the last flood in the high school basement. Um, they came in and, and did all of the mitigation work for us. Um, and we, as a side note on that project, uh, all of this was covered, this cost and the additional costs associated with the flood, with the exception of the twenty-five thousand dollar, um, deductible. So that's that expenditure. And a couple of other ones I wanted to highlight really relate to our special education program and, and just to highlight how difficult it is to hire psychs and occupational therapists and, um, uh, SLP, speech and language pathologists. Um, we often have to look to outside contractors to provide support in our program because it's very difficult to find those, those positions and get them filled. So a couple of expenditures this month, one is to speech consultants. Um, we've contracted with them for, uh, additional speech services, and that's in, in the amount of eighteen thousand three hundred and eighty-eight dollars for this particular invoice. And then on the next page, uh, the Stepping Stones Group, which was, uh, special education occupational therapist and materials, um, to them. So I just, kind of my focus tonight was just to highlight that, that as we start to talk about staffing for twenty-four, twenty-five, we're already starting to think, okay, we didn't fill a psychologist opening that we wanted to fill last year. We also had a SLP, speech and language pathologist posted. We needed to start looking at, okay, what is our, uh, what did it look like for contractual services expenditures? And, you know, uh, from that standpoint, we need to get out right away and start recruiting for those positions again, which we will. Um, so that way we won't have to contract. Uh, it's better to have onsite service. Sometimes it's a remote service that they provide, and as we all know, face-to-face services for kids are, um, always better. So those are the two I wanted to highlight tonight, or three.
Great, the Belfour one was the one that I was going to ask about. Does anybody else have any questions about the list? Yeah, Derek.
Um, it, it varies, but yes, they can be, they can be pretty expensive. Um, so we always like to take a look at what, if we can hire somebody in-house, we're going to do that first.
Any other questions about the, uh, payroll goods and services? Okay, I, we're on to item D, which is the first reading of two policy updates. The first policy fifty-two eighty is on the separation from employment, and the second policy twenty-one ninety is the highly capable programs, and I think Superintendent McKay is going to, uh, explain those to us.
In front of you, you have a document that looks like this. Titled, uh, Policy Review, December two thousand and twenty-three. And, uh, I got some pretty good feedback from, uh, the members' last meeting, although we had ten policies at that, or one, one meeting prior to, we had a lot of policies lately, uh, that you felt it was a, a good thing to put this in front of you, that you could take it with you and, and, and do your own research during the course of the month. So the practice of providing to you a written, uh, review of the policies will become a commonplace each month and pri- and when we take these as first reading. So you have before you, I wanted to describe what it is here. Uh, please don't think that I have the ability to wordsmith all of this, all right? This is simply a cut and paste from documents that come from, to us from WASDA called Policy and Legal News. And so I take that, review that, and then pull out what I think is pertinent for you to know about these policies. And so what you have here is a summary of that work. Tonight, you do have two to consider. Again, the policy process is a two-phase, multi-month process. The first, first month is first reading. This provides you the opportunity, as it says, for the first time to read what is being presented to you. It gives you the month then to study it, uh, if needed. And then before the board would adopt in month number two, it gives you a pretty clear understanding of what's being asked of the district, why it's being needed to be done. And it also provides you the background knowledge of why it's coming to you. Uh, at that second, uh, meeting, which for these two policies will come to you next month for, uh, an adoption and second reading, it does always allow you to, if you don't feel comfortable still after that, you can still ask for the tables of those policies or one of these, in this case, one of the two polys, policies to do further research and review on it. Sometimes we get into situations that we realize that it may be advantageous to engage our legal counsel in policies, and so that buys some additional time to get those to them, uh, for their review as well. The two that I bring you tonight are ones that have trickled to us from WASDA. Please know that WASDA has already had their legal services look at these. Most likely, these also came from the state legislature. And they come to you, two very different ones. Policy fifty-two, fifty-two eighty speaks to the separation of an employment, employee. It speaks about classified employees, and it also speaks about certificated employees, and there's really a difference in how, how that is done depending on what type of employee it is. And so this will go through and, and summarize for, for you why this is coming to you for consideration. The second policy and procedure, twenty-one ninety, has to do with our highly capable program. As you can see there, I will always put what it is coming out of WASDA. The first one is an encouraged policy. And the second one is essential, and essential means that it has some legal ramification as well, that we need to do it, we need to put it in place. This one also is not a large change, but it is more of a clarification of what the initial policy said, and you'll be able to read that as well with regards to what was outlined in Senate Bill fifty-seventy-two. So again, this gives you a month now that you have these in front of you to ask any questions that you may have, either those tonight. You can also ask any questions of me, uh, via email or contact me, or we can meet in person to do any further research that's needed on these. Are there any questions with regards to these two? All right, thank you.
Great, thank you. Uh, and our final, uh, consent agenda item is the overnight travel request. You can see it's for the honor band PLU trip to Tacoma. Uh, is that Kevin? Do you address that, or, okay?
Can Charlie take this? Yeah, Chris or I can take these. Uh, our students, uh, and their abilities have again, uh, allowed them in the fine arts and music in this time and band in this time to travel to an honor band competition. Uh, we have seven students who are going to be traveling to PLU in Tacoma. That also includes two adults that will be going as well, one female and one male. Uh, the dates of this is one-four through one-six. We bring this to you because anytime our students are traveling overnight, they needs to have your approval. They are not traveling out of state, that, uh, would be another one that would come to you, and then out of state for any of our employees that travel out of state and overnight. This one comes to you simply for in-state overnight and definitely, um, from something that we have supported as a district in the past and are, and are lucky and fortunate to have students who have, uh, their talents, have given them the opportunity to be able to participate in this event.
And any questions or comment from the board on the overnight travel request?
Not necessarily pertaining to the overnight stay by any means, but as a former and current band nerd, um, who fully supports obviously our, our band members going through stuff like this. Is there a contingency plan? I mean, it's January fourth through the sixth. Are they taking private vehicles that are capable of making over the mountain passes? If not, is there a contingency plan to get them there with other means? I hope they don't have to worry about it, but.
I'll first respond that the district has vehicles that they would travel in, and those would be our Suburbans, I'm assuming, which are four-wheel drive capacity and safe vehicles to travel. Uh, contingency plans, actually, if this pass was to be closed, it would not only impact our students, but probably many other students who would not have the ability to get there. Um, in past years, when those things have happened, they've either rate, rescheduled these type of activities. I, I know there was one year they tried to do it remotely and it didn't, didn't really work all that well, so I don't know if that would be an option. Um, but I would assume that they would reschedule based on, uh, travel restrictions. But for the vehicle part, um, our students would be traveling in district vehicles and would be driven by our staff, and the vehicles they're driving are, would be considered to be winter travel worthy.
The other thing I just wanted to throw in is our transportation director does keep a very close eye on the road conditions and because sometimes passes are open and it's treacherous to get over, and sometimes decisions are made ultimately by the superintendent to cancel, um, our students to attend depending on that situation. So just because the pass is open, it wouldn't mean that for sure they're going. So we've had several times over the years, not several, but a good handful of times over the years where trips have been canceled due to the conditions of the pass.
Any other comments or questions? Well, I, it's just great. I, we were at a game recently, a, a basketball game recently with the band there, and they just sound fantastic. So I think the program's in great shape. Uh, and this certainly encourages those, those students to perform as well. All right, I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda. Um, uh, the Human Resource Action Sheet, the Payroll Goods and Services, um, the, uh, policy updates first reading and the overnight travel request. Do we need a second for that, or can we just?
I think it's always helpful to have a second.
Is there a second?
Go through that.
Great. Uh, any questions or comments? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, consent agenda signify with an aye, please?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Great, we now move on to the section, uh, where we get to hear from our student representatives. Uh, and, um, tonight we have Elise Zanich and Indiana Hillnusier. Uh, they are in a different spot. They're out of the corner, uh, that they were in before, a little better angle on the screen and, um, glad you're here tonight. Do you have anything that you want to share with the board this evening?
Yeah, I have a few updates for you guys. Um, just, uh, things that have been going on in the district. I'm sure you've heard a little bit. Um, but our ASB program this year, uh, at the high school worked on the adoptive family, um, thing where a bunch of families, uh, get, we buy like Christmas presents and things that families who are less fortunate in our district may need. And so we had over forty-five families participate this year, and all of our stuff was delivered to the civic center yesterday. So those, uh, presents should be in the hands of our families by now. Um, a lot of high school clubs and staff members and students throughout the, the district participated in getting the items, so we're very thankful for them. Um, in addition, our spirit week is this week, so it's been fun to see all the festivities and dress-up days that our different schools are having. Um, and just as a student body, we're looking forward to stu- to winter break, and we're really excited for two thousand and twenty-four. So, thank you.
Thank you, Indy. Elise, do you have anything? Okay, great. Uh, do you have a favorite day this week? Have you dressed up every day this week?
I'm, my big one is pajama day, and that's tomorrow, so I'm excited. I have matching PJ pants with one of my friends, so we're gonna wear those.
Very good.
Uh, one, one, one question. Ladies, can, can either of you speak to the, um, event that happened, uh, a few weeks ago where you were able and other students were able to go into Old Navy and shop for families? Can you speak to that, Indy? I think you were involved. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, I was there. I didn't really have a big, um, hand in like the running of the event or anything, but I was just there and it was, it was honestly a good time. I had a lot of fun. We got like a, a paper that had like a student, um, with their age on it and like some things that they liked. And we just got to, we got like a hundred dollar like gift voucher, um, at Old Navy, and we got to pick out like a hundred dollars worth of clothes and other items for, um, the kids. And I don't know, it was fun to like pick out outfits for them. And, um, but I just remember there were a lot of people there from our district, a lot of people I recognized, and um, it was really cool to see our community come together to support those in need, so, yeah.
Is that the one Jared Brink was, boy, what a, what a great job he did organizing that whole thing. Great, thank you. Uh, all right, we move on to the, uh, report now from the Executive Director of Student Learning. That's Alicia Jacob, and she's going to, uh, tell us a little bit about her updates and including the student achievement data report that she has.
All right, good evening. Thank you. So we'll go ahead and jump in there. Thank you, Jennifer. All right, so tonight what I'm going to do is I'll be sharing our standardized results from last year. There's a few different data pieces that we'll be going through. So I do want to just make sure everyone knows who the TNL team is. So, um, myself, and I know Betty has been here frequently, Betty Lopez, who's overseeing our student services. We also have Jeff Cochran, who's our Director of Future Learning, Kristi Arian, who's the Director of Student Support, and Hunter System, who's our Director of Student Success. We also have Rachel Dibble, who helps a lot with our data components. So all of our assessment and data, um, she supports as well as a lot of our technology when we look at the software that we're using for our different, um, instructional purposes. She supports that at work as well. So whenever I talk about TNL, it's not me, it's the whole team. So just wanting to make sure everyone knew all the different, um, people that are supporting our buildings and our students. So, and I'm just going to briefly go through these ones, but just knowing that everything that we look at when we're going through our process from a teaching, uh, teaching and learning perspective, we all, our first thing that we're looking at is that core purpose that we have, ensuring that all students are learning, um, and that's all students, which goes into our MTSS system where we're looking at what do all students need and when they need it. Our vision in that mission statement where we are looking at partnership, um, just earlier today, we're working on Sense Time and Memorial, which is a curriculum from a Native American perspective, and it really focused on community as well. But that mission of how do we look at not only our students and our staff, but our families as well as the greater community, and how can all of us support the learning in Seala School District? Our vision with the Portrait of a Graduate, we'll be coming to you with some, um, work that we've been doing that in our district. We started it last year, but we're actually looking at how that portrait of a graduate with those key words of collaborate, innovate, communicate, empathy, and resilience. How that looks from a preschooler all the way to twelfth grade. So we're working at a continuum and a, and for lack of a better word, a rubric of what do those skills look like, but we've been developing that, and I'll be sharing with that you, with you later this year. We also have our core beliefs of character capable, and we focus more on career. And the reason we do that is because college is an avenue to get to a career, but all of our students eventually will be in a career. So we've really been focusing on what are we doing to prepare them for career, knowing college for some will be that, and for others it may not be, which all leads to our Viking promise. Um, when we look at it, this is just another graphic that shows all that work, but our Viking promise is really what teaching and learning has been focusing on. And it's that goal that, and we have those key four words of an equity centered engaging and personalized learning experience, but it also needs to be emotionally and physically safe for our students. And so that's been a big focus. Um, and I know you see this when Chris presents on budget and all of it, but just reemphasizing that's the work we're doing, um, and it's being, that's happening from our preschool all the way up to our twelfth grade. So our data, so tonight I'm going to focus on our assessment data. Um, I'm using everything that's coming from OSPI, so there's no differences on numbers. If you go to look at report card, you're going to see similar numbers there. Um, just because when we get the data files, sometimes we're off by, you know, portions of a percent, and so we want to make sure that everything is the same as what you'd see outside of what we're providing you. Also, we're going to focus on the assessment, um, and achievement right now. The state will release, uh, attendance, discipline, and graduation rates, usually late January is when that will get released. Um, so we're going to hold on that one so that we can have those results because they're still in the calculation. Graduation goes all the way through August of thirty, thirty-first. So there's some of that just takes a bit, a little bit longer from the state to, um, to calculate. So just giving overview of the data that we're going to do today. So the first one is, and we have more acronyms in education than I think in any other field, and sometimes we reuse those acronyms. But one of them is our WA Kids, which is our Washington Kindergarten Inventory of Developmental Skills. This is an assessment that we do every fall, um, with our students. There's the capability that we could do it multiple times through the year. We focus on fall only. It's a readiness assessment, and the data packet- It's a readiness assessment. And the data packet that I also provided you has a little bit more detail. I'm given overview with this presentation, but your data packet has more. So if there's additional questions, you can always reach out to me based on that data packet. But there's six areas or domains that we assess our students in. Um, part of that is the assessments and it's a whole child assessment. We also, as part of the kindergarten readiness assessment, do a family connection. So they meet with the families and go through that. And we do that the first two days of school. Um, and that's why we have the alternative schedule for our kindergartners. So this is required also for full day kindergarten funding. So it's a requirement that we do. Um, but it goes through those six domains. Um, that's, so that's one data point we'll be looking at today. And that really just tells us however, how are our kids entering our system, right? So where are they at in terms of kindergarten readiness for us? Um, the other one you're gonna show, and I know you've seen these before, is the I Ready Benchmark Assessment. That's what we use. We use it in grades K through eight. In kindergarten, we do not start it until winter because we are doing the WA Kids data. So there's, that's the only one that only has two data points versus three. We do it fall, winter and spring. Um, it's through all grade levels, K through eight, and it's specifically for ELA and math. Um, so that's another data one that we'll look at this year. And that one is more, it's looking at where, how are students progressing through the year? Knowing that the ultimate goal is for them to be at standard at the end. So it gives us kind of dipsticks at time on how our students are doing during that time. Um, we'll also look at our.
Alicia, can I just stop you for a second? The I Ready Benchmark Assessment is for language arts and math or those are the two? Okay, thank you.
Just those two areas is the only ones that we have the I ready for. And that is a district assessment. So that's one that we choose to do. Um, then we have the Smarter Balance Assessment. That's a spring assessment that we do. It's regarded as part of the Every Student Succeeds Act. Um, so there is a requirement that we have to test. Um, we have to test ELA and math um, annually in third grades, three through eight. And then we have to test it once in the high school. We chose tenth grade is the year in our state to do that. Included in the Smarter Balance Data that you're gonna see, um, and that is also what's called WA Aim, which is our assessment that we use for students that have um, they're, they're severe profound with their disabilities. So they, the SBA is not the appropriate assessment for them. So they have an alternative assessment that is included in our results because they just look at it as our students across. If you go onto OSPI's website, you'll see them disseminated out, but most of the results are just clumped together. Um, as well as, so that is only for ELA and math. We also have a science assessment. That is also required a part as ESSA. ESSA, what it requires is that it's once in each grade band of th- elementary, middle school and high school. So in our state, it's in fifth, eighth and eleventh grade that we do that. It's an annual assessment as well. Um, so both of those are just done once a year in those grade levels. And then the last assessment that we're just gonna give some is the, it's our WEDA. It's the English Language Proficiency Assessment that we do. WEDA actually stands for Wisconsin, Iowa. I don't know what, D Delaware maybe. It was the states that initially came out with the consortium. So it's not one that actually is the abbreviation of the assessment itself. Um, it's one that we do annually, the spring, in the spring, we do that, the annual assessment, but we do do screeners upon entry. And this is for students that come into our district. When students come in, there's a um, a language assessment that they can check that says that they have an alternative language other than English they speak at home. When that box is checked, then they start this process of being screened. Um, so we screen them for their language, understanding of English. And depending on the screener and the score they receive, then they come into program and that's when we can give them language services to help with them learning English. Um, the, all the students that are in that, that have screened into the program or who have an annual assessment and that is done in spring. We usually do that in March and we do the SBA and WW cap, we usually do in April and May.
Alicia, is the um, ESSA a federal act? Is that from the federal government? Okay.
Yeah, so that's, that's the, the federal law that um, pretty much everything under education falls under that, that our requirements are. But it does have testing requirements. And actually our, um, the WEDA is a requirement of that as well. It's part of the Title III component of that, that we have to have uh, an assessment that we use with our students. Um, and the, the WEDA is for all grade levels. So it's K through twelve that we do that. And depending on when students come into our school system, and if they came from a different country, um, they would get the screener and then they go in. So it's not that they, that everybody, it's whenever they come to our country that they start. Um, so if they come in sixth grade, they would be screened and they could go into the program at that point. Any other questions? I just realized a lot of times I whip through all the assessments and don't give you an understanding of what it is that I'm talking about. So I thought it might be nice for you to have some understanding of the different assessments we're talking tonight. All right, so let's jump in. So like I said, the assessment packet that I provided to you is gonna have more details um, to it. This is just a quick um, overview of the, the six domains that we have. So you'll see there's cognitive, language, literacy, math, physical, which is the movement, and then the social emotional. And this is um, ones where the teacher does either individual or group activities with the students and rates them on that. And this is what from last year, this is all last year's data. When students came into our setting, this was the students that the percentage of students that had met the standard of what we would expect for kindergarten readiness. Um, so if you look at cognitive, it's about almost sixty-four percent of the students had been where we would want them in readiness. It doesn't mean that they have everything, but in a readiness, there's like a range of what we would say is appropriate for entering kindergartners. That's where they're at. Math was our lowest. Um, we were strongest in our physical and our social emotional. Um, and this is a very similar look each year when we go through it. In your data packet, you'll see it broken down by different programmatic or demographic um, populations. You'll also look at it from the ranges. And because in our WA Kids assessment, it gives us what those ranges should be. So it would um, developmentally, you know, like if they're kind of in a birth to one or a two, two-year-old, three-year-old, four-year-old um, type of range, it'll tell us where our kids fall in that. Um, so there is more detail that I gave you in the packet.
Alicia, we'll, we will share this information with our pre-K or group of like gym kids and busy bear and stuff like that, kind of where they keep coming in.
Yeah, you know, I think that would actually be a great suggestion as I don't know if, I know that Ali Graham is in his role as the early learning director. He has done coordinated um, opportunities with our, 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 our daycare and our preschool settings across our, our community. I don't know if actually data has been shared, but I do think that would be a great opportunity for them to know, like this is when they came in, some of their strengths, there may be areas of growth. Um, and it probably would even be more beneficial to have it from the continuum of seeing where there's the differences, but that's a great idea. I know that Lee works with them. It'd be something he could share. Um, and this, usually this data comes out, so like they just finished the assessment mid-November. So our new round of data for twenty-three, twenty-four typically comes out about February, March is when we'll see our current kindergartens.
And is there a, a state average for these that we, that we know?
The state really hasn't put it as an average because they see it as a developmental continuum. What they see those as, is where are our strengths and weaknesses in our system? And also it helps them to advocate for preschool, right? That preschool is, and when we, one thing that we haven't done with this data, um, we have done it with our other data. Just because it's one that we can, that we can take it and we can disseminate or disaggregate out, is to look at the students that came to us in with preschool experience and the students that haven't. And there is a discrepancy between that. Um, the preschool students have some skills that those that have not attended preschool do not.
And do we have any sense of whether this is, uh, if, if we see growth in this over, over the past few years? There's just the readiness part.
Yeah, you can. The hard part is, is like a whole new set of students coming in every year. So um, that's where it's almost like a snapshot of just that group coming through because there's always strengths and weaknesses. The way that the kindergarten has been using this is just when the data comes out and the teachers are going through it and they're starting to see where there are areas that students might need additional support, they've altered their instruction. Because on these ones, this, the teachers are doing all of the testing and entering it in. They don't get to see the aggregate of it, but they can see where their strengths and weaknesses are of the students as they're doing it, which is a nice one because most of our assessments, we don't. We're not the one, I mean, we administer it, but we're not the ones gathering the data and getting to see it be entered in.
Okay, thank you.
Then I've got a question. Um, on this, I can see with the top five, how we can have metrics for those. How do we measure the social emotional? Because I'm not really sure, or I'm not real familiar with it.
Yeah, and at this level, social emotional is going to be, how do they interact? And because a lot of what it is at a kindergarten level is how do you interact with another, right? Like we, we're not gonna hit, we're not gonna grab something from them. So those are the types of skills that they'd be looking for. So that would be more observational is what they're gonna be doing with students. So that, that'd be the focus with that age. Yeah. All right, so, oh, yep. Yeah, that they aggregate the data, so it's put together. No, and it's more, um, so we, that isn't one. I don't, um, once we put it into the system, because we don't use the, like I mentioned that you can do, you can do the WA Kids three times a year. We choose once. So once we do, then it shuts down and we don't, that access isn't there. So we, it's been an aggregate by the building is what we've been looking at it from. And it will post on OSPI's website later, but that could be something, that could be something I can share with the principal that could be um, sent out in her newsletter so that there'd be a link for, to be able to see the aggregate data. All right, so we're gonna start with I Ready then. So this is the benchmark data. What I'm providing you is gonna be their first assessment and their last assessment, and we're gonna go by building. So remember with, um, with Robert Lins, they only tested in the winter and the spring. So it was about a, a four-month difference um, with that. You'll also notice though, even though there's additional colors up there, um, in those colors, so green is kind of like they're on track or they, the green with the, the black lines is really their, they, they're on track or even a little bit higher. Yellow is just they're almost there, but not quite. And then the red is where they're, um, they're looking at being multiple years behind. The reason there's none in kindergarten is because we don't have any other grade levels from that, right? So when you look at it, um, you can see with this one and that doesn't look right to me. I think the it should be the other way around. Um, so I think where it says winter and where it says spring, it should be the other way around on that one. Um, on this one, I'll have to look back on the data, but I'll, I'll explain the, the pieces with it. So what we're looking at is should be the movement of students and we shouldn't have students going backwards. I apologize on this one. It should be the opposite. So what's on the bottom is saying spring actually should be our winter and then it, so this be opposite on this one. Um, so what we wanted was actually, you should be seeing, and you'll see this with all of them, is we're seeing growth with students. Our yellow and red is where we want to have students go moving out of that. Um, so even though it's probably clear, not really clear on this one, but that top one should say spring and the bottom one should say winter. Um, on that one. Does that make sense though on what you're reading and how you're reading it? Okay. I'm gonna move to then with, I keep wanting to use my laptop, John Campbell. So on this one, it's a similar one that we're looking at. So if you look on the top, we have fall now. Um, because that's when they took their first assessment. Kinder only took it in winter. So the top two is our fall for first grade and second grade. And so on this one, you'll notice there are some red where that means that there are more than a grade level behind or there's some concerns based on the assessment. And you'll notice also in our green, there's very, there's very little green, um, when we look at it, four percent. Or if you combine the two, eight to ten percent of our students. By the end of the year though, there was a great growth that we were seeing. The red and, and the biggest one is to look at that minimizing of red. That's what we really want. It was because when we have students that are multiple grade levels behind, it takes time to get them back up, right? So our goal is to at least try to get a year and a half growth with those students. And when you look at that, I mean, with our, with our JCP first grade, um, we were down to only four percent that were in that red and thirteen percent with our second grade. So starting in where we were at before and the movement, that's great. And you can just see kind of the visual there too with just the, the green, yellow and red with that. The reason too that our numbers sometimes of our students that didn't get, like the assessment numbers could be different is based on when we test them and, and the number of students that were there those days. So that's where sometimes our numbers get different. At our intermediate level, so the first three that you see on the top, that is our, um, our fall data for third, fourth and fifth. So it's where the students came in and then the next three is their spring. So if you look at the first one and then you go down to the fourth, those are the matching ones together. Um, so again, we had lots of students moving. We had our red shrinking. Um, in that regard, more growth, do we want? Definitely. We want more growth than what we're seeing, but we are seeing that the students are progressing um, as they go. How our buildings use this data is at the end of the year, we do transition meetings for the grade levels moving up. Whether they're moving to another building or moving just to another group of teachers. And this data is looked at to see where there's some gaps that maybe need to be filled sooner versus later when we're working with it. So that is how we use this. We also use it um, at the benchmark times with our, what the buildings would like to call is our, um, our go times, which is our growth opportunity times for students. And we do those whether the students are needing extensions, so they may already have it. We extend their learning or if they need additional support. So all students are receiving what they need at that time. So this data is helpful in that regard as well. At the middle school, similar thing. So we have our sixth, seventh, eighth grade um, with the fall on the top. And then we have our sixth, seventh, eighth grade with the spring on the bottom. Um, again, you're not seeing as much movement here. We would like to have more movement. And I know that that's been a conversation that our middle school is having on just, um, how do we engage our students into the learning? Um, initially, we didn't have intentional opportunities for intervention. Over the course of the last two years, they started to embed that in so students could get additional support. Um, and that has, uh, we're starting to see some growth that way. We're hoping that it's gonna transfer on to our assessments too. We'll be taking the next I Ready um, in Januaries, January and February is when we'll start to see our winter scores. So we're looking forward to that. I'll be bringing that or the buildings will be bringing that depending on when the building um, meetings with you are scheduled. We'll be bringing that to you. And then this one is math. So that was our ELA. Remember at the high school level, we do not have I Ready. So it's only K through um, eighth grade. So this is our math version. So that was our ELA. This is our math. Again, similar thing. It'll be Robert Lins first and then our other buildings. So here is our winter um, for I Ready with math, where sixty-eight percent of our students were not where we would want them to be at that point. And then that growth where we were, we still have lots to do and we still need to improve our students' growth, but they did move students. And um, there was some continuation of that. And this one, there's a shorter period of time with this one because this one would have been a January, January, February assessment, and then it would have been a May assessment on this one with these two data points. And then John Campbell, similar thing. So the first two is the fall and the bottom two is the spring and it's accordingly. You notice with this one, there was quite a bit of shrinking with the red, much like our ELA. Um, in that regard and just that intentional keeping the focus. And we know the more that we can get students leaving a grade level on, leaving in this, in the, in the summer to go to summer on grade level. We know that there's gonna be some learning loss, but that's just going to ensure more success the following year. So all of our grade levels have really, really been intentional with trying to accelerate that um, areas where there's needs to be some acceleration due to, I mean, learning loss for different reasons. COVID hit our students pretty hard, but also just making sure that we're, we're getting those needs for students quicker, right? Not waiting till the end of the year to see there, there could be some gaps in learning. And our intermediate again too, just looking at kind of where those colors are, um, and noticing that the red did shrink as well. Um, we had quite a bit of growth with our third grade, um, and then also some with our fourth and fifth. And I, at SIS, at our intermediate school, they've been spending a lot of time really looking at the math progressions to understand how math is built upon itself to provide for students that um, those that may not have all of the, the necessary foundational math skills, what's the ways that they can start to embed some of that into their instruction so they can start to learn it? And I mean, sometimes it just takes a different way to see it or a different way to hear it that can, can give that student that opportunity to make it click for them with math. So they've been putting a lot of emphasis, emphasis on that this year with their math instruction. And then our last one for I Ready is at the middle school. Um, this one again was with math. We didn't see much like with our ELA. We didn't see as much growth as we would like. Um, so they are looking at the ways to provide that intervention with mathematics as well. Um, they also are looking at how they can bring manipulatives and um, what we, some engagement strategies with that too. Just to get some students that they can get the conceptual understanding, since a lot of middle school math is where we're expecting. Um, we're expecting them to know their operations. So they're starting to use it in more, um, even though we'd say it's more algebraic, it's not necessarily algebra as a course. But they're using that, they're using variables, they're using fractions, they're using decimals. They need to have a good understanding of their nu- numeracy to be able to do that. Um, so they've been working on that this year as well.
Alicia, I might flip the way I'm trying to answer this question, but in this case here, eighth grade for both the LA and math was kind of biggest, least amount of growth. Then you look at it historically, is that always a problem in eighth grade? Or is it that seventh grade class and eighth grade class, and then will they have the same problem? So you look at it at like grade level or that, that class of whatever that's do they always have issues? So is it a eighth grader issue problem or is it that class that has that problem? Can you look at the information that way?
Yeah, and that's a great question. So what I'm hearing you say, is it more from an instructional standpoint or is it more of a cohort, right? Like there was some gaps along the way. And um, I, I, I think how, how I see the, the teachers looking at there's, there's going to be differences in, in grade levels. Sometimes when we see students come through, that we have groups of students that may have um, challenges in other areas that groups before. um, challenges in other areas that groups before them didn't. The other thing though, I think is always, we always need to be changing our practice based on the students that come to us and how do we meet their needs. So, I think it's both, right? When they look at it is what could we do differently? What are some things we need to maybe consider differently when we're teaching? But also there could be some that it's more of a cohort. And we do know that there's, I mean, we've had some cohorts too, um, that we know whether it's behavior, whether it's math, E L A, that might be a struggle for them.
I would say also to add to that is that, um, the rigor for students increases substantially in, in that middle school years. And you couple that with, um, potentially a lack of motivation, uh, by the students to perform their best of their abilities on assessments like this. Um, it's, it's difficult at times to convince them, uh, on an assessment like this to give us your best effort and show us what you know. That, that in itself with middle school kids for some is a challenge to do that. So, I, there are lots of variables here, no excuses at all. Uh, there's way too much red on here for any of us to, to say that it's acceptable, but there are a lot of variables that go into that as well. Uh, this, this here, as you can see, leads to, to great concerns from all of us because you are starting to see students that are multiple grade levels behind. And we know that that's problematic to get them caught up. And it's going to take a lot of interventions as they move through the remainder of their grades up until the 12th grade, grade to get them to a place where they can obtain a high school diploma. So, this is, this is concerning, definitely.
Alicia, is there a way that we look at this data? So, yeah, the, the red is concerning. And Kevin, I'm glad that you mentioned the lack of motivation. I have a middle schooler who, really smart kid. He's in algebra. There's no issue with grades, but he bombs these things. And, and I've asked him that question. What, what's going on? And his teacher's not concerned, but he just really didn't care to take the exam. I just did it as fast as I could. So, I do believe that that is really a concern, not necessarily something we can do about it. So, getting to my question, these kids that may not be scoring well, is there a way that we can recognize who they are and see where they, how they're really doing in their math class?
Yeah. So, we consider this a data point, right? And we have other data points that they have within their, I mean, the middle school, SIS, any of our buildings, they have other data points they're looking at. There's a couple of things though in the assessment system. If the students go too fast, it gets flagged, right? So, that's one that, and they have two levels of a flag, a yellow flag, which just means they went a little too fast. A red flag is they just went bum, 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 like and typed stuff in. So, that's one where it's, so then it would be a false negative, right, is what we're receiving on the students. And a lot of times the teachers will then ask the students to redo it, which then sometimes keeps them from doing that again because they know how to take it over. Um, the other thing is once we get the results, it, it gives us, um, all the students, we get individualized information. It also lets us know within there, because they're looking at multiple standards, right? So, I didn't break it down into all the standards, but there's four key areas in math that they look at. Under those folk, four key areas, it'll say which areas they did well in or may not have done well in. And so, that good allows the teacher to also have some like, okay, they didn't do well in this, but maybe we, we just started teaching it today. So, I know that one is. Or this is, this is complementing what I see in class. So, there is that opportunity for the teachers to be able to dive in and get more. It's nice because it does tell them like, here's their strengths and weaknesses. So, you can group kids together if you know they are, and then there's, you can resource it that way. But it gives them a chance to, to do it. So, we don't just take the data and be like, okay, you know, you're struggling. This is what you do. The teachers have the ability to use that as another data point.
And Indy, you had a question or a comment?
Yeah. Um, I was wondering, is there a way that you guys can look at this like in comparison to other schools? And, um, yeah, just to like, does this have something to do with COVID? Or like, do we see this a lot within like this age group around the state or in our area? Is there a way to look at it like that?
So, with I ready, we can't, um, do that. I ready is a district choice to use that assessment platform. So, it's not, and they're not, it hasn't been one where they want to share other districts. They're, they're willing to tell us like where they feel we are in relationship, but they don't ever give us ones like we could with state. So, we haven't had that, um, that opportunity. I, what they would say is how they look at it is the amount of growth. And so, they're, instead of telling us that students are like where they, like you have too much red, and let's just say that that's the way that do it. What they would say is based on how students started, this is the expected growth of what we should have students. And they'll tell you, did you make your expected growth or not, is how they look at it. So, it's all about, it's a growth mindset versus an expectation of where students all should be. Um, which is a little bit different than with our state assessments because our state assessments is just, are you proficient or you're not, right? This one's really looking at it more of, are you making growth along the way? Yeah. And, and actually when we, the, if you go through and there's a little bit of variation just because it's a five level for I ready where the state's a four level. But if you kind of know that you're, you know, those, those three in the center could be distributed a little bit differently based on the state assessment, it's very similar. So, the last two years, our results on I ready have been very similar to what we've seen on the state assessment. So, we've been saying like, it's close enough that it is a good predictor that if we're seeing students struggle, we'll probably see those same students struggle on the state assessment.
Uh, before we move on, excuse me, uh, I, I saw big gains at John Campbell. So, I want to just commend John Campbell for making those big gains. And a couple others that stood out, third grade E L A at, at SIS had huge gain. So, great job on, on, on those progression. And fifth grade math at SIS also seemed like it really stood out, uh, to shrinking that, that, um, that gap that they had, that those are real successful models for us, I think.
Well, and I, I appreciate that you say that because I, a lot of times when we look, because our next date is going to be state assessment and that just starts at third grade. But that really, all of our state assessment is based on how our primary, um, grade levels are doing with our students, right? Because they don't just start in third grade and that's the only time they have it. And I know that our Kinder, well, our preschool, Kinder, first and second grade teams have really dug, I mean, over the last three years where we've done our priority work and working on our standards have really dug into what do we need our students to know when they leave us to ensure that success, which then minimizes the amount of red we have in other grade levels as we go through. So, there's been a, a really strong initiative with that across those grades.
And I think, uh, Mr. Iverson has something to say.
Yeah. Uh, Indiana, just have you ever gone to the report card from the O S P I website?
No.
If, if you look that up, just look up O S P I report card and you can look at data from all the schools, both individually within our district, but also statewide.
Oh, perfect.
Um, that's a great resource. It doesn't necessarily reflect I ready. Um, there are other tests that they use for that, but it's a great place to look at comparisons. Um, and then one general question that I have is for me, I mean, because I, I harped on this quite a bit during my campaign. How do we pass so many students through who are two grade levels behind? Because this has been like with the I ready scores, the data I had was from 2018 through, uh, spring of last year. And so, it's been pretty consistent. These numbers kind of stay about in the same range. Um, and so, how do we pass those kids through when they're two grade levels behind?
So, I, and I understand, I understand where you're coming from on that. I do think that we have to look at it as this is a single data point. And so, do we have other data sources, uh, like what the teachers are getting on a daily basis? And even kind of using your example, Sarah, of what you said with your son about not caring about it, right, on that one? Um, that said, we still look at, how do we, I mean, our perspective and Kevin, you can speak up on this one is, I mean, we're not looking at holding students back. This is an assessment that we're looking at. We can try to incre- decrease those, um, red areas, but that hasn't been, that hasn't in the past been a practice that we would retain students based on a single assessment. That hasn't been our practice. Yeah.
Correct. Yeah. Promotion, retention. We do everything we possibly can to help them improve on their assessments or the data that they're showing us without retaining them. That retaining of students at specifically at certain ages within their development is, research says is detrimental to their academic growth other than in support of their death, their growth.
And certainly my interest would be in increasing the scores and not holding people back. And that's really how do we increase the discipline and the motivation in the students so that they take these things seriously through 12th grade? Now, I think that's really as I've talked to people and what I'm hearing tonight, I'm, I'm hearing that that's a really big problem. And so, how do we, how do we get that motivation and discipline back into the students? Because we should expect more and our kids can perform at a very high level. Um, Cila's a great place. And so, yeah, I, this is why I'm here is because I'd really like to see Cila achieve his potential.
No, and I agree. I definitely agree with you on that. We, we can do better. And, um, I know we've had lots of, uh, we were recently just talking with our high school too. And as we go through the S B A data, I mean, this is twi- this is three times a year and then S B A is one time a year. And that's another one where kids are like, you know, what are you going to do if I don't do well on this assessment, right? So, how do we get it like, so it's kind of this, uh, show them what you can do, like versus you're just taking it to take it. So, I agree with you on that. Yeah. All right. So, that's our I ready data. That's our internal. That's our benchmark data. And then we have S B A. And this is our state required assessments. Um, this is, everybody in the state is doing it and actually across the country. There's multiple states that are taking the same assessment, um, as us because it is part of the requirements from the federal government to assess. This one, you're getting a snapshot that you can see, and we broke it out also by the different groups just to kind of see, do we have any discrepancy when we look at our different populations of students we're serving? Um, so, it's each of the grade levels. You'll see them as they go down. They broke them in, we broke them into by building just to, to have it by the building. So, you know which ones test where the first column right after school is the all. So, that's all students combined together. And then as you go through, you'll see that there's the, the gender, then it goes into race ethnicity, and then it goes into the different program groups. So, just know as you go through that, those students are included in some of them. So, those that are male and female are included in the race. They're included in the, the program data as well. Um, so it just gives us an understanding. This is data that we look at just to see, is there any discrepancies between our groups and where they're achieving? Um, or where there, it might be strengths or weaknesses. Um, in terms of E L A, we were a little bit below the standard, um, or what the state was in, um, in our areas. At the middle school and high school, we were not as much. Um, third, fourth and fifth, we were, there, there was a substantial difference between us and the, and the state in that regard. Um, but this is just a, a snapshot to look at it where it says N A means we had, um, we didn't have any students. Where it has a star means we had students, but we didn't have enough. And the state just states that we should always have at least 10 students before we put a percentage up there because then you could start to identify who the students are that the data is representing. So, that was our E L A. This is our math. Um, and this is like a, a little bit of a nuance that's unique to Cila. Is typically our math data is better than our E L A at the elementary level. Um, and that's unique. Typically, you don't see math being better than E L A at any level, but it are, that's kind of been a consistent thing here, um, with that. And those are our results. Math across the state is lower than E L A. Um, and again, our, our numbers were a little bit different. Um, I pulled up the state just to have it in terms of, of math. Um, they're like at third grade where there's probably the most, they're at 50%. We're at 44. And then at 10th grade, they're at 29, almost 30% and we're at 21. So, there's, there's about a 10 to around 10% difference between us and the state, depending on the grade level in that regard. And again, it's, it's just one to get a snapshot to see what our different populations, um, are. Male and female, we have about the same amount of students in that. We don't have a big discrepancy in terms of the number of students we have, but just know some of those populations, really Hispanic and white are our largest. The rest of them, just depending on any given year, we may not have enough students that actually we would be able to show the data in this forum with that.
And, um, before we move on to the, uh, uh, W C A S, science, um, by disaggregating this data, what do you, what do you notice? What, what trends do you see in terms of maybe gender or demographics?
Um, so with our gender, it's, that's probably like kind of a typical what you'd see with gender. Um, when we look at it from our populations, I mean, definitely our white population is outperforming our Hispanic, right? So, what is there some differences that we would want to look at that and to see? And we also, when we look at our programmatic data, um, eh, one of the things that we have is our students with disabilities. Um, and a lot of times our multilingual learners, those two populations are, are not performing as high as our other ones as well. Um, our multilingual learners, that would all, that would be students that are part of our dual language program, but it'd also be students that are not. So, depending on when a student that, um, thinking back to the W I D A where I said they screen in and they get language services, that's what designates the student as being a multilingual learner. Um, depending on when they come into our district, they may not be eligible to go into the dual language program. Um, if they have not had any dual experience, they would not. So, then we have students that are being served outside of dual as well as in dual. That would incorporate, incorporates all of those students in that, um, identifier. What we have been looking at in our, um, in our, just over the last couple of years, because this, the discrepancies that you see or the disproportionality, that is not unique to this year's data. It's very similar. Um, and what we see with the other ones is looking at how do we look at, um, providing opportunities for our students? Um, knowing the strategies that we use for multilingual learners, for students with disabilities are going to support all of them. And one of the big ones that we found, um, with some of our students is the ability for them to talk and have voice during their class time so they can actually articulate what they're learning, whether it's with a peer, whether it's out loud in small groups. So, this year that has been a focus is student voice and, and giving them an opportunity to be vocal in the classroom. We had, um, a group of individuals follow a few students, a day in the life of students and realized they talked very little the whole day. They sat in a class. They did the work. They'd moved to the next class. And how are you going to be engaged? How are you going to learn if you're just sitting there and just taking stuff in, but not again, an opportunity to also process that and use it again? So, that has been a focus. And that's kind of where we can see it in the data, like let's do that. Let's give opportunities for them. So, we're hoping our data is going to show some of that in this year.
Thank you. I, I just find that the disaggregated data very valuable because you can see some of those equity issues, I guess I would say, where students need, uh, different things, um, a- as they come into and progress through our schools. Uh, so, thank you for focusing on it.
And then this one is our science. Um, we call it the W C A S. And so, this one again is fifth, eighth and 11th. Um, and those are our results. What's interesting with science is in, um, eighth grade, we outperformed the state and we were very close in our fifth and 11th grade with our state, with the state. So, science has always been a strong, um, we, if you look back in time at our, in our district, it has been strong in that we've outperformed a lot of times the state, um, with our science scores. So, and the science is accumulative. So, when they test in fifth grade, it's based on the standards from all the years up to fifth grade. Same thing with eighth, it's that sixth to eighth grade band. And for 11th grade, it's the ninth through 11th grade band. Um, where the other ones were grade specific when they take the assessment.
I also want to share a concerning trend that we're seeing with regards to more of the secondary age students in middle school and high school when it comes to the statewide assessment. And this is not a trend here in Cila, but a trend that we're noticing across the state and nation is the refusal of, of participating in these assessments. Um, those are parent directed choices that they choose not to have their child participate. And so, when they, when they don't participate, uh, their score is a zero. And so, it's not exempt. It's still calculated. It still goes into the percentages here. Now, we have the ability to pull a lot of that information out and, and do that. But it's a, it's not a significant percentage, but it's a growing percentage, which is concerning to us. Um, I think it's, uh, it, it varies by grade level, but somewhere in the neighborhood between five and eight percent, uh, depending on last year's assessment per grade level. But it is a concerning trend for us to see that increasing, uh, which tells you potentially that some families, um, are not seeing the importance of this, uh, assessment as well.
Yeah. So, this, these numbers represent all students that are in our system, whether they tested or not, right? So, if we have students that don't test, so they were absent during those times and we couldn't, we couldn't get it to be made up because they were out sick, students that, if there was a refusal, which, uh, those automatically count as zeros, but all those counted zeros and calculate in. So, this isn't just the students that tested and what was their scores. This is, here's all the students that were expected to test. And then their, either whether their score was actually they tested or they did not. So, that, that's included in all of this.
And what do running start students do?
They come back to test.
They do come back to test. Is that a significant portion of those who opt out because they may not be on campus or is it a different population?
No. And our high school actually did a really good job this year of talking to families. And in prior years, we had a lot of just, we don't want to do it. I mean, we had a lot of, and they spoke to them saying that, you know, this is a, it's a requirement by federal law. We're required to test. And we have a requirement to meet 95% participation. If we don't meet 95% of popu- of our population participating by grade level, they can pull our title one funds from us. So, I mean, that, that is a, it's a good reason that we want them to test, right? That gives us millions of dollars. So, we don't want to lose that funding.
Also with running start kids, you're talking usually about juniors or seniors. We, our assessment is, uh, for E L A and math is done at the 10th grade.
But for 11th grade, we do set up a time for them to come and test.
Great. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
All right, so last one then, and I'm just, these would, they're just have two, again, like the rest of them. There is more detail on WIDA in the packet that I gave you where it breaks it down by the different um, grade levels. It also gives you more information about where they're at. But the idea with WIDA and what they're looking at is that research has shown that when students are learning a second language, it takes about seven years to become fully proficient. And so what this is saying is looking at these different grade levels, where do the students that tested, how have them looked like they're progressing in the right way? To meet that proficiency in seven years. What we need to realize is that for some of those kids, they didn't come in as kindergartners. Right? They could have came in as a sixth grader. And so again, it would take seven years for that. So where they're progressing would look differently, right? On that one, and do we have enough time with them to progress to that level? But it does show that we had some, we had quite a few students in our, in our area that, I mean, especially if you look at first grade and for fourth, fourth grade, or even kind of our cis band there. That we have a lot of kids that are progressing to look like they're on track to be in that seven years, they will be proficient with that. So that's something that's different with WIDA. And before it was just, are you proficient or are you not? They had different levels, but they didn't talk about it from a growth standpoint. And WIDA, they do give us that. Are they progressing where we would like them to progress? Oh, you you put it up, so I thought you were going to ask me a question. Okay, I'll keep going. All right. And then the last one is those that met standard. Um, and again, these are, um, as Derek had mentioned, these are actually pulled off of report card is where I pulled these off of. You can print them off and have them. But uh, this was just showing the students that met standard. So that's that idea that when they took the assessment, so they all had screened in, but when they took the assessment, those students now had shown that they were proficient. Which means for the next two years, we track them just to make sure that they, their language is still strong. But they, they're not eligible now for language services because they met the proficiency that is expected at that grade level. And these are about what you would expect. I mean, because it does take multiple years for students to get it. So you do have some students, like we think of kindergarten, you don't a lot of times see a lot of kindergartners that transition the first year. But they were probably right on the cusp when they came in, right? It could also be, it's the first time that a lot of times kindergartners have ever been tested. And so testing kindergartners, and I've had to do it with the screen, it is, they're squirrely. And they're kind of looking at you like, why are you asking me these questions? But it does let you know that we want to see kids progressing out. So this is good that we're seeing it. It may look like small numbers, but for some of those students, they've been in, they've been in program for a while. So as we see them in ninth, 10th, 11th and 12th, that we still have kids exiting, that's a good sign to see it. Because they at least they've made proficiency. We don't want to stop trying to get them to be proficient. So as I mentioned, this was specific to our achievement data with looking at it specifically ELA, math and science. Um, and then we had the walk kids data and the language proficiency. Hopefully we'll be able to do this in January, maybe the February training, whenever we can get these posted, then we'll bring this data to you too. So you can see what attendance looks like for our students, the discipline as well as our graduation rates, um, so that you can see that data as well.
Upcoming, you will also uh, have, as we did last year, the principal roundtable reports coming up in, I believe, February and again in April. Uh, and so the first one, as we did last year, the principals will present their current, more current data this year in a report to you as well. So you're seeing from last year, you'll see some data for this year. Uh, and then um, we'll come back again with the data that Alicia is speaking about grad rate and discipline and attendance. I think it was a goal of the board to engage in more of these kind of presentations with regards to data. The building of the data dashboard, uh, the understanding of the different assessments we have, where you can locate the data. And the report card, we've tried to be really common that that is a place where people can go to and see the same results that we, we are showing. It doesn't, again, it does not show the I ready, that is an internal district assessment tool that we use. But all of the statewide data, you can compare, you can compare district to district or grade level to grade level if you choose to.
Alicia, I have a quick question. So I recognize that we have SBA and then our internal I ready. But we also know how now have that group of eighth graders in the dual program and they are stamp testing. And I know they've done some, they did some pre-testing recently and some of them are testing proficient. And that's remarkable. And I would love to see that information if, if you can get a hold of it. And I know it's brand new, right? So this is the first group of kids, but going forward, will that be something that's part of this presentation?
Yeah, we definitely can. I know Christie wanted to share it when she gave her, you know, she does the federal programs and she brings the dual piece in. But depending on when that presentation in and when we do the February, we could bring in the stamp testing too. And so the stamp is, yeah, so the stamp assessment is one for proficiency in Spanish is what we're doing it with them. And we also use that same assessment for students to get the CILA by literacy at high school. But if our eighth graders pass it, that can be used. And if they pass the SBA and ELA, then they would have um, the CILA by literacy when they graduate.
It would help the board, it would give us a little better, kind of a glimpse into what's, what's going on with the dual program. Because we haven't really had metrics for these kids. So we're finally getting to that point where we can have some numbers to see. I mean, I know what's going on with my child, but I don't know what's going on with the program in general.
Yeah, and that's something that we could also just bring a presentation about our dual language program to the board if you'd like. Because I know you've been part of the advisory team, but we've, or the leadership team. But we've, we've made quite a bit of changes in terms of um, the data that we're collecting and when we collect it. So we have it across the board where initially we didn't have any of the Spanish assessments in and we have those in place now too.
Right, so I think I would like it to come to us.
Yeah, yeah, we can do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions, anyone?
Questions or comments, Joe? Um, are there, if I, maybe this is too big of a question, so I'll apologize in advance. But are there curricular or instructional changes that you're seeing at the buildings as as a kind of a um, system wide things? That you are, that are recent, that are new, that might be impacting uh, the scores or impact the scores in the, in the future?
Definitely, I would say over the last um, three years, I mean, when I first came in, we, we reevaluated our priority standards, right? So that was the work of that year and really looking at our scope and sequence when that happened. Last year, their focus was on creating common assessments based on grade level and content or content at the secondary level. So all of that now is being implemented. So it was kind of building it up to that process, which was needed for their, their um, their professional learning communities. With the work they do on Wednesdays, when they look at the questions, they're bringing data to those teams with. So we, we really do feel like that is now in the process where they know it, they're working with it. And now that's going to be implemented. So we're hoping to see some gains with that, as well as over those same three years and, or the last two years and this year as well. They've been really working on refining what they do during intervention. And we call it intervention, but it's really extension as well. So if students have the standards already in place, we're extending their learning. But also if they don't, then we're being very targeted based on skills that we're looking at versus everything. So being very targeted. And the data that's coming out of that, specifically at our K5, because they track it and they do it in six week cycles very deliberately. That data is showing some really good growth with our kids. So we're hoping it reflects in our, for that to be our I ready, because it'll take a few years for them to progress up into our state assessments.
And are there any, uh, there must be some hangover from COVID still. Obviously, we're going to be dealing with that for years to come. Do you get a, do you see any of that or read any of that into the data?
I think it's always a lingering question that we have, but um, so there, there, there has been a little bit of a gap that you, or a drop in our scores. But there has been some consistency in what we're seeing too. So I don't think that can be the excuse that we need to make some changes and we need to meet our students' needs. Because each group is a little unique in that regard. So yes, but it's not the reason that, that's not the reason that the scores are that way. We have other things that are also needing to be changed.
Yeah, we, we really feel strongly that we don't want to use, COVID happened, it, it caused some diff- difficulties for our students and all kinds of different things. But I, we don't, we as leaders and hopefully you as leaders don't want to use that as an excuse anymore. We, we definitely need to move by that. It, it, it may have some implications on our student learning, but we can't, we can't use that as the sole reason. We have to move forward. Um, and we have to, we've, we see things within the data that point to other areas and just what may have happened in COVID to them individually.
Excellent, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Alicia, that was excellent. We appreciate your, uh, your report and your feedback on that data. Thank you. We'll move on to the Associate Superintendent for District Operations Report. Chris, you have some information on our financial report and an enrollment update for us, I think.
Um, yes, we'll um, cover the enrollment update and the most current financial status update at the end of the year end report. So we're going to dive in here. Before I get started, uh, just want to remind the board and for Derek's understanding too. I know he, he knows where our page is on our website, but business services page on the website. Tomorrow will be updated with all of the most current financial information, including this presentation. As a reminder, we're required to, when we close the books in any given year, in September and October for the year end, August 31. We're required to submit what they call an F196 report through the ESD to OSPI for approval. That report's about probably that thick. Yeah, it's about 150 pages. So we decided you probably didn't want to go through all 150 pages, but more than happy to answer a lot of questions. But so what we do in this, with this year end report, as you know, is we give you highlights of year end for all five funds. So that's what we'll go through some information tonight and we're available for questions at the end.
Before Chris gets going, I, I don't want there to be any confusion. This is a annual report that comes to the board every, every, every year. It, it reviews what transpired fiscally as we closed the book on this year. This is not to be confused with the work that we are doing in, in regards to our budget and preparation for future years. Okay? That work and we've, uh, we've identified a uh, study session date that is in January. That will be specific to our work with our budget in preparation for 24, 25. So those are two different things, although they have a lot of the same components together. I don't want you to think that we were going to get a presentation on a budgetary update with regards to this year and preparation for next year. That's coming to you uh, as scheduled. Uh, and when we did that all the way back in August, when we made those determinations that we're going to schedule that. So that will be coming to you uh, at the study session in January.
January 9th or 11th, whatever the date is, I think it's the 9th. So yes, so I have a few slides at the end of this presentation. I moved them to the end on that um, note to actually, uh, so that we'll, and we'll cover those in more detail at the January study session. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time on that work tonight. We just decided, let's just focus on year end. One other quick reminder on timing, you might think, well, why is the year end report coming in December when the year ends August 31? Uh, the process for closing the books is all of, the year ends August 31, but then in September, we have to go through a whole accrual process. October, we have uh, certain things that OSPI opens up for year end and our year end reports do October 25th in any given year to OSPI. So as a standard practice over the years, we've always had the December meeting be our time when we present the year end report. And we also bring the board up to date on the monthly financial status report. So tonight we have the October financial status report to give to the board. We don't have November yet because we don't get the county treasurer to report until the middle of December. So we don't have the month closed out, so we don't have the November report. So the January business meeting will bring the November and the December financial status update to the board. And then um, in January, so that's in January, then February we'll have one, we'll, we'll be caught up. And every month we'll have the financial status. And this isn't new for this year, this is a standard practice. It just takes time to get through the process to get the books closed. So we wouldn't be this party anyway. Anyway, so okay, gonna dive in. Okay, skills. You're gonna cover Jennifer? Okay. As a reminder, so this is the year end report as of August 31. So the Board of Directors and Cabinet Administration as of, is for the 22, 23 school year. That's why Jeff Hartwick is still listed under Board of Directors instead of Derek. So I was, we always like to start the presentation out with the um, leadership from both the board and the cabinet administration. So on the next slide, as um, Alicia mentioned, when we present uh, in a different, different areas, one being the financial, whether it's be the budget or the year end report. We always want to bring people back to our mission and our core purpose and the Viking promise and all our core beliefs. Because those are the conversations that happen every day in making fiscal decisions. Our, our finances need to follow the priorities of the district. We can't afford to do things that aren't a focus for the district and aren't priorities for the district. And so really, just trying to make sure everybody understands that we're not independently out here making decisions about how resources are going to be. Applied to program without these things in mind. So at the core of all of the decisions that happen at the board and also our cabinet level, as well as our building administration. The students are at the core and we're looking at these things for all the decisions. So ensuring high levels of learning for all students, as Alicia mentioned, um, that is our core purpose. Our vision portrait of a graduate, so every student future ready by being able to collaborate, innovate, communicate and to show empathy and resilience. That is our, our purpose. And portrait of a graduate, okay, so Viking promise, you're getting ahead of me there. Okay. So the Viking promise, this is um, an interesting thing I just want to point out. We, we are making more of an, having more of an intentional purpose and working with our operational teams as well around the Viking promise. So that we can ensure that all components of the district, whether it be on the operational side of things or the student learning side of things, that we're all focused back to this Viking promise. And we had the opportunity this summer to work with our operational directors for transportation and uh, technology, maintenance and facilities. And um, our, our nutrition. So our crew, we appreciated the work with our TNL team to help uh, further educate all of us about how we fit into this equation. So it's important and I feel really good about where we're at. We have our purpose defined for all of our departments and we have ongoing dialogue about what that means. And how they support this, this purpose and really operations being the ship. And so, um, as you know, our goal is to meet the needs of the whole child by creating an equity centered, engaging and personalized learning experience. And an emotionally and safe, physically safe environment for each child in CILA. Just as to kind of head off into the financial report here, um, just a reminder, Stephanie and I work collaboratively together along with Kevin and the cabinet. To um, bring this information to you and to actually work with the finances. We're not into, when I first started in CILA, I was asked to just, okay, this is your deal. You're the finance person, you make the decisions. It wasn't a lot of collaboration. And I didn't, I don't have a teaching background, so that really didn't help very well. But over the years, it's evolved to be a great process and it's very collaborative. Student enrollment history, this gives you um, a good snapshot. I gotta catch up here because my eyes aren't that good. Over time, back to 16, 17 with our enrollment. You can see that um, pretty much we were staying pretty steady through, obviously when COVID hit, we took a, a deep dive into 2021. And then we slowly recovered. We're actually uh, fully recovered now at this point during the school year. Our projection 3671 for 23, 24, we have exceeded that. Not by a lot, but we are uh, above that level. So we feel really good about that as we meet with our fiscal colleagues and other districts up and down the valley. As even as recent as yesterday, we had a meeting with everyone. And there are a lot of districts that are experiencing a declining enrollment and have not recovered from COVID. And that's frankly, one of the main reasons districts are um, in financial trouble is because the declining enrollment is not helping our situation. So we feel good that uh, we have fully recovered and hopefully we'll continue to grow. Demographics, I always like to include this in the presentation to show, you know, basically you, uh, almost equal female and males. In our student population, uh, we have, you can see there that the race and ethnicity broken out there at the bottom. There's no surprises there, but I wanted to provide that for the 22, 23 school year. Free and reduced populations or poverty rates. As you can see, the um, current, the three year average as of 2023 was 58.78. Um, I was actually going through some older information the other day and I came up with the year that I came in 2000. I think our, our poverty rate was just under uh, 40%. It's like 36 or something like that. So definitely the poverty rate has increased over the years. You can see there by building uh, where we stand on our poverty rates. And this information is important because the because the three-year average is used for the, for the LAP eligibility and allocation of resources. And it was just a huge win last year when we, our high school ended up going over the 50% and we were able to have LAP High Poverty Funds allocated to our high school, about $300,000, a little over $300,000, which really does support what we're trying to get accomplished there. So just wanted to give you that information. We have the preliminary 2324 there as well, so you can see that. And that'll be finalized in March. At the end of March, OSPI pulls our, our data and then that'll be the final for allocation for 2425. Okay, so this slide is a key slide in this presentation because it gives you a snapshot of all five funds of where we landed financially with each fund. So you can see across the top there, the total revenues. Far left fund, our general fund, that's our operating fund. So the majority of our business runs through our general fund. You can see there that we received 60.4 million dollars in revenues and we spent 60.4, I mean, sorry, 59.9 in expenditures. We also transferred out $400,000 from our general fund to capital projects. That was the last year that we're making that transfer for a bit, a couple of years at least, that we will not recommend to transfer. We feel like we've done a great job as a district, replacing facilities and keeping up on the, the work that needs to be done and maintaining facilities. And so we're gonna, we have some money left in the capital projects fund that we can utilize if we have HVAC issues or other issues that we need to take care of. But at this point in time with our financial situation, we're not in a position to make recommendations to move funds out of general fund in the next couple of years at least. So with that transfer out of $400,000, you'll see under the net line item there that our fund balance actually grew by 127,986. And if you'll remember back when we presented the 2223 budget, we projected a 1.1 million dollar deficit. And you might say, well, how does that happen? Well, when you look at that, we ended up running 94 student FTE over projection. And as a reminder, when we staff project, when we staff our, our district for the basic education program, we use our projection to staff. And so that, when you, when you end up over projection on enrollment, you end up generating more revenue for the district because it drives additional staffing that you're not hiring and so on and so forth. We don't like to see the district that far over on our projection. I mean, financially, it's, it's nice, but we would rather be right in the 30-ish student FTE over projection because then we don't have any class size issues pertaining to that. And so, but that was one reason. We also received additional federal money through our special education program. We receive funding to serve students that are living and being serviced by Yakima Valley School. We receive anywhere from, well, we get about $120,000 per student that we serve up there. We typically don't need to spend the full amount just on serving the kids. I mean, every, there's an impact, like the director's salary partially is coded to the Yakima Valley School money because she is supporting that, that program as well. But that's helping subsidize special ed, those federal dollars plus the Yakima Valley School funding, that helped us really close the gap on our, our deficit with our special education services, which is not unique to Seela. But so we had a variety of things that helped us come into the black of the bottom line for the general fund, which was nice to see as we move forward into our budget challenges here over the next two years or three years. The ASB fund, as a reminder, that's our associated student body fund. So that's the fund that supports students in the district. We have, you'll see there at the bottom, an ending fund balance of 454,000. We've ranged over the years anywhere from 300,000 to 500,000 in ASB. Our interest is to, as funds are generated over the course of the year through fundraising and such, we want to support those students as they go through the system. Our goal is to not make that fund balance as high as we can get it. That's not the purpose of the fund. The purpose of the fund is to serve and benefit students as they move through the system. The debt service fund, that fund merely exists to pay our principal and interest payments on our bonds. So the taxes from our bonds that we have passed come into that fund and then principal and interest payments are made during that, that year. So that's all that's done in that fund. Now remember, all of these funds that maintain a positive balance throughout the year, they're, we're earning interest on those funds as those are invested and those interest earnings also stay in the fund. Capital projects fund, that fund exists to pay for construction projects that we either pass bonds for or that we have financed through our general fund where we've compiled funds to go or monies to be in that fund to help with the non-bond projects. Like I said, HVAC, roofing, all those things that come up from time to time unexpectedly, most of the time to, to take care of. And we've done a nice job having not a huge balance in there, but enough to be able to take care of some of those things. Also, like I mentioned, when the capital projects fund, we also are paying the payments to build our schools, build our facilities. So the last project that we're just finishing up as we speak is our transportation cooperative. We still have a couple of open submittals to OSPI that we haven't received state match, back on state match funding. But otherwise, we have still some expenditures left, but the facility's complete. They're just troubleshooting just a few things, but it's, it's really gone well. So we will, oh.
Sorry, just to add on there for our capital projects, we also have in that fund balance that will be rest.
Yeah, we have $3.7 million that was donated from a private citizen to, to be used for a tech center when we build it. So that's why that balance is also a little higher because that amount will sit in there until that happens. Transportation vehicle fund. So we get depreciation payments from the state on all the buses. When we buy new buses, they're on a depreciation schedule. We get payments through the state. Those depreciation payments go right into the transportation vehicle fund and those funds are used to buy buses. So we replace buses over time. We have 32 buses in our fleet here in Seela. We use many of them, 20, let's see, 20, 20 buses, 22 buses, minimum a day on routes. We also have trip buses and we have sub buses that we need to be able to utilize. So we have a great mechanic. We've had great mechanics year after year here in Seela. They've done a nice job keeping up on our buses and we do replace as we accumulate funds and are able to surplus out buses that are costing a lot of money to keep running. We surplus those out. We buy a new bus just with those monies. We haven't been, had to subsidize it with general fund in quite some time. Buy new buses out of there. So that's, that fund is just used for that. Any questions on this overview of?
Just if there's one page that summarizes the financial status of the district for last year, this is it. This is really, if all the other things, this would be the one that I would continue to refer back to. It could pose some questions. You're going to get more detail here. But, but this is, it separates each of the funds here and, and most importantly, the general fund is that you can see the revenues we received, our expenditures and what the ending, ending net is and then how that goes into the fund balance. But if this, this is one for, for a, I would say, a citizen, a starting point for them to understand the financial finances of the district. And for a board member, this is again, I think of all the slides that Chris is going to present, this is probably one of the most important ones for you.
We'll expand a little bit more on the cash reserve fund balance at the bottom there, here in a few slides.
Okay, so now we're going to look kind of more in depth on the revenue and expenditures for last year for the general fund. Like Chris was saying, we had budgeted a negative going into the fund balance last year, about 1.2 million dollars. We ended 128,000 to be good. Kind of looking at some reasons why. Chris talked about the enrollment, we were 95 above projection. And if you estimate that, that's about $10,000 a kid. So that's about a million bucks that we made more than what we were in just beginning last year. So that helped eat up that negative 1.2 million dollars quite a bit. But then you'd also look up here, revenues is the top part, expenditures on the bottom. We included some notes on the right side on some of the reasoning why those differences from 2122 to 2223 occurred. On the revenue side, Chris mentioned the increase in investment earnings. We earned about $180,000 more in investment earnings and E-rate. We get E-rate funds for some of our tech expenditures as well. But the biggest change you'll see is in the apportionment line. That's 3.4 million dollars that we received more last year than we did the year before. One of them was obviously the enrollment piece. Another piece of that is our CTE program at middle school. We expanded it in 2223 for seventh and eighth grade. And I think that was about 200 students. So you see additional money coming in there because we get that enhancement. And then salary funding increase, we get IPD from the state through our apportionment funding formula. You'll see that additional. One, the big negative up there for federal funding, that has to do with our ESER funds. As you guys know, we've kind of kept you up to date on all the ESER spending. Those funds are coming to an end. So as those funds are spent down, we have less left that, that revenue and expenditure. Then on the expenditure side, you'll see regular instruction, we were down 402,000. But then if you look down at career and tech, that's our CTE program, that's where you'll see kind of the transition for those 200 FTE middle school CTE students goes down to career and technical education. So we're receiving that money through CTE and not regular instruction in that year. So that's kind of the big, big shift right there. And then compensatory and other instructional, so we're looking at all of these various different grants that we get, especially Jeff Cochran. He writes a lot of our grants and he brought in, gosh.
Over 300.
300, 400, 500. Yeah. So a lot of that comes from specific grant writings and grant awards that we get. We got quite a bit that year, so that's adding. And then another item to note here is our capital outlay. Last year, you'll see it dropped about a million dollars. In 2122, we had spent quite a bit of money on our ELC renovation. So that kind of skewed it in that year and it dropped back down to 484. Yeah, and that was that as well.
Questions on the, well, the one line item that Stephanie didn't talk or speak to, support services under expenditures. So the last, second to the last line item there. Significant increases in utilities, transportation, nutrition, maintenance, liability insurance. I mean, all of those things have, have gone up. Our, our diesel costs for our busing, we were about over 100,000 over our projection. I mean, it's just the expenses in all areas are going way up. So that was definitely part of the, the increase there. Any questions on this slide?
Well, this next slide looks at the same expenditures, but in a different way. You look at it by object. So you'll see our certificated classified salaries and the benefits attached to that. So you can see about a million bucks each for certificating classified that it increased over the prior year with $800,000 in benefits, which in total is about 6% total in salary and benefit increase from the prior year. And that's mostly with IPD plus any negotiated increases for our supplies and materials. We stayed pretty constant, only increased to 36,000. But purchase services is where you'll see that big hike, the 400,000 that Chris just mentioned about utilities liability insurance, that's where we see a lot of that increase there. Travel stayed pretty constant, about $43,000 increase. We did a little more travel last year. And then again, capital outlay, we had the ELC renovations.
Mainly with the travel, we've had with a lot of the grants coming through, some of that travel that's been happening, it's been funded by grants. So that did, we had more grants this last year than we did the year before. So that's one reason. Okay, so these, these charts just give you one more way to look at the expenditures. We won't go through these in too much detail, but basically you can see the breakout. State general is the majority for our revenue, 62%. State special is, is like special ed dollars and some of those specific entitlements, or not entitlements, resources that we receive from the state on learning assistance program and a lot of those other areas. Federal is a low, low percentage for us. It's, it runs anywhere from 7 to 10% in any given year on federal funds that we receive. And then the others are local taxes, 6% and then others. So pretty typical from year to year. On the expenditure side of things, this breaks this down by program. Regular instruction obviously going to be the highest at 44% and then you can see the breakdown with the other areas. And then the last slide here for expenditures is on the by object. So salaries and benefits, we always like to just remind everybody, any, most districts run, well, all districts that I know run over 80% in salary and benefits. We run 83.2% at the end of 2223 and we're right at about 84% right now. So it's typical district to district. It takes a lot of people to run a school district and to do everything that needs to be done. Okay, this is a slide that we added so that you could just kind of see trends here from 1819 up through budget 2324. You can see revenues starting in 1819, 49.4 million basically, up to 2223 is 60.4 budget for 2324 at 64 million. So an increase, five-year increase from 1819 to 2223 is 11 million. Expenditures running from 47.4 million up to 59.9 and then for budget, 66 million. That's an increase of 12.5 million in expenditures. And some of these numbers are skewed with ESER funds, obviously on the revenue and expenditure side. You can see the transfers out there at 400,000 through 2223. So just kind of gives you an idea for ending fund balance there. You can see 9.1 million in 1819, increasing to 11.2 million in 2223. Through McCleary and then ESER funds, we were able to keep our fund balance pretty healthy, which is nice. Ending this last school year at 18% of our expenditures, which as you know, the school board policy requires us to keep an eight, minimum of an 8% of expenditures fund balance. If you ask people like me and Stephanie and people that work with finances, 8% is a little low. I would recommend at least 10, but 8% pays one month's bills and the ESD and other folks recommend that be your base and then districts go up from there. So at the bottom of this spreadsheet, you can see the certificated teaching FTE from 1819 up through 2223 and then budgeted for 2324. You can see the administrative FTE and then classified down below. So you can see how the staffing levels have varied over time. And then at the bottom, you can see student enrollment. Want to talk about ESER?
So to update you guys on where we're at with our ESER funds, if you remember, we've been allocated about 8.7 million dollars in total with ESER funds through the one, two and three allocations. The first one came out in March 2020, which was about $640,000 for us. That was used primarily for the initial response to COVID. So a lot of health and safety expenditures and making sure our students are equipped to learn remote. So a lot of technology and connectivity expenditures there. Our second allocation, about $2.5 million, which we fully spent as well, was used, there was a big chunk that we used for 2021 for enrollment stabilization. If you remember, we were allowed to claim the unearned revenue for our lost enrollment because our enrollment took a big dip. We were able to claim that and kind of make ourselves whole that year and that kind of saved our, saved our bacon on that budget year, not have to dig into the fund balance. That year, we spent a lot on our expanded summer school program as well and continued investment in technology with more devices and connectivity. And the last allocation, about $5.5 million, we've spent most of that. If I go back to that first slide real quick. We have about $490,000 left of that third allocation. We've spent everything else, so about $8.2 million is what we spent. And this is through the end of October. So we haven't updated. And this is through the end of October, so we haven't updated it for November yet. But through the end of October, we had about four hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars left in ESSER three. And that has to be spent by September twenty-twenty-four. So we do have a plan on what we're going to spend that for. On this slide, on the right side, you'll see how we've outlined to spend those remaining funds. On the left is kind of an outline of how we spent those funds so far. As of the end of twenty-twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three, you'll see we spent a big chunk on the ELC renovation. I know that's kind of small, but you can probably pull it up bigger on your, on your computers. But the ELC renovation, a lot came from the ESSER three allocation. We did spend a lot on staff professional development and additional staffing support in our buildings and extra hours for those staff, certificated and classified. And we also spent some funds on improving air quality in our building, so a lot of HVAC upgrades. And then some additional expanding summer school and continued investment in technology. But going forward, to spend that remainder of four hundred and ninety thousand, we have a little bit of staffing left. We tried to minimize the staffing that we paid for new positions that we paid out of COVID, COVID dollars, because we knew those funds were going to go away. We do have one instructional specialist that we still charge there. In part, yeah, along with the other part going to one of our grants. And then we have additional support for classroom support, extra hours for staff that we will continue to pay out of there, as well as some student supplies, band instrument repair and purchases, and some teaching and learning TV and, and technology.
So just to add on, on that last slide for the ESSER funds. So just to emphasize the fact that as we moved through these last few years with ESSER funds, we were very careful as a district to not hire a bunch of positions and leave them funded under ESSER and then have the cliff happen, and then we don't know how we're going to pay for the staff. So every staff member, we had just a couple each year, we had a plan. Like we front-funded our counselors the year before that the state allocated additional funding for counseling because we wanted to get those additional supports in the buildings through COVID. And so we did that, we had a plan, we moved them into the basic ed formula after that. The cis instructional specialist we hired because we had so many new certificated staff members at our intermediate school. This position's been instrumental this year with staff. We, we coded eighty percent of the position here to ESSER and then twenty percent for out of a grant like Stephanie mentioned. But we have plans for that next year. We don't have ESSER funds available after this twenty-three, twenty-four year. So we have, we have a specific plan for that. And a lot of these other areas that are covered here, middle school, high school, band instrument replacement and repair, and so on and so forth. We had funded in other areas, but because we had the ESSER funds available and it was an allowable expenditure, we went ahead and utilized the ESSER funds to support those things. And then next year, we have a plan to move them to another resource, or they'll be eliminated in our reduction process. So we've just been, we wanted to be very careful about this. This is, our colleagues in other districts are getting in a lot of trouble because they have twenty staff members they have to riff because the ESSER money's going away and they funded that much for staffing. So it's just something that, as a district, we were very careful when we had our conversations about it. Okay, this slide gives you a highlight of our fund balance and where we've been back to two thousand eighteen. This back, I have this report back to when I started here in two thousand. You can see year to year what our reserve fund balance is on the left, our unreserved amount and total fund balance. The unreserved fund balance percentage and the total fund balance percentage. When we talk about our fund balance percentage, a lot of times we'll talk total. But when we are in the midst of labor negotiations and other discussions like that, we need to be careful to make sure everybody understands that there are reserves within the cash reserve that, reserves within the fund balance that are not just available to be spent on anything. Like, for example, we have six hundred thousand dollar carryover in our nutrition program. We can't use that money to buy five teachers. So you have to keep in mind the reserves. So also pointed out, I want to point out on this page, you'll see on the far right with the percentages, the nineteen point eighteen in blue. That's the McCleary decision came down. Districts were receiving additional resources. And so a lot of things started to happen, supposedly supposed to make it easier for districts to not have to rely upon levies. That hasn't exactly turned out like they planned. And then in the purple, the light purple, those years there are the years we've received ESSER funds. And so just trying to frame the, you know, where we're at with fund balance is again, through these years, through all these years, we've maintained a very healthy fund balance. Like I said, we ended twenty-two, twenty-three at eighteen point six eight percent. As you know, we, you have adopted a budget for twenty-three, twenty-four with a projected deficit balance of two point three million. Fortunately, here in Sela, we realize we're listening to the board's directive to us to, to bring those revenues and expenditures back in line. We want to, as this project, and I won't go into all the detail because we have a January study session, but we're listening to that and we know that's what we need to do. We need to be able to sustain our levels moving long term. We can't continue, we don't have an unlimited cash reserve, right? So, but at the same time, we have a healthy cash reserve that we can use to soften the blow over the next couple of years to get us to that point where we can stay with a balanced budget. Okay, so this slide basically just summarizes the ending fund balance and shows the parameters that the school board has dictated to the district as far as fund balance level. So at the very top, you can see there, two percent of the eight percent requirement is for emergency fund. Three percent is for budget contingency fund and three percent for cash flow. So as a reminder, with cash flow, most school districts, probably all school districts, when you start to apply for your federal grants at the beginning of every year, it takes a few months to get approval and to be able to draw down those funds as you're expending those for staffing along the way. So a lot of times, I mean, districts have to have money in the bank for cash flow. So that's the reason for that. Our cash flow need runs between three and four percent at all times. Budget contingency, like I said, in the emergency fund, those two line items basically are available for the unforeseen. So that totals eight percent. You can see there, our total fund balance parameter for twenty-two, twenty-three is just about four point eight million. We ended the year at eleven point two million. So we also, I back out the reserves. The end of this year, we had a hundred and, or one point seven million in reserves. I broke the reserves out there at the bottom. So you can see that we're, we're sitting in a good fiscally responsible position right now at the end of twenty-two, twenty-three. Four-year forecast, so what does that mean moving forward? And this kind of sets the stage for our January conversation. But this tells you that in twenty-two, twenty-three, you'll see the financial information there on the far left numeric column. Then moving forward from twenty-three, twenty-four to twenty-six, twenty-seven, you can see there, if we didn't do anything, if we didn't make any reductions or plan for reductions, then we would be in a negative fund balance position in twenty-six, twenty-seven. So we would be eating into our fund balance at a rapid rate, and we're not interested in doing that. But this kind of sets the stage for all the conversation we've had with the board to date about, you got to, this is something we need to, to take care of. So with ESSER funds going away and also expenses continuing to rise at a higher pace than our revenues, we need to figure out how to bring things in line, and we're listening to the board on that point.
All right, so switching over to our long-term debt, we do have two outstanding bonds that you, I'm sure you guys are aware of. Voted bonds are two hundred, or two thousand eighteen bond is still outstanding and our twenty-twenty-two bond, which was our refinance or refunding of the two thousand twelve bonds. If you remember, we refinanced at a lower tax, or lower, lower interest rate and saved our taxpayers about four point seven million dollars. We have no non-voted bonds. Our total outstanding bond as of the end of twenty-two, twenty-three was even fifty-nine million dollars. And then talking about bonds, we like to look at our debt capacity as well. Debt capacity, school districts can only carry so much debt at any given time. And it's all based on assessed value and the percentage set by the state. For our voted debt capacity, it's five percent of our assessed value. So for us, it's about one hundred and fifty-eight million dollars. We take out that fifty-nine million dollars that we already have outstanding and any bond funds that we have, it's sitting in our fund balance. That leaves us with about a hundred million dollars in debt capacity for voted debt. Looking at the non-voted debt side, the capacity rate is point three seven five percent, or about just shy of twelve million dollars in non-voted debt, or in non-voted debt. So about a total of a hundred and twelve million dollars in total that we would have available to us in capacity, which in the scheme of things, I know we're updating our long-range facility plan right now, and this information's been provided as well. But a hundred and twelve million dollars can't really get you a whole bunch right now. So not that we would go out to the, the voters for any kind of bond at the moment, but just something to keep in mind. And then talking about how that translates to tax rates when we're looking at both the bond and levy. You'll see down below when we're looking at twenty-three and twenty-four. In two thousand twenty-three, our levy rate was a dollar forty-eight per thousand assessed value, and our bond rate was a dollar seventy-four, or three dollars and twenty-two cents total. But if you look at twenty-twenty-four, and I'm sure you've all seen your tax statements come out, Sela had an increase of about twenty percent, just shy of twenty percent in assessed value. And that wasn't just here, I mean, it was pretty much statewide that we saw those, you know, huge increases come through, the unexpected increases like that. But what that did is it drove our levy and bond rates down. So you'll see when we passed our levy this last time, we went for the four-year and we were projecting a dollar sixty-five as our levy rate. But with that assessed value increase of almost twenty percent, we're now sitting at a dollar fifty-four per thousand. For our bond, it's a dollar twenty-six. So what that, what issues that could bring us in the future when we're looking at our projected assessed value is if you look at twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven, we projected ten percent, eight percent, and eight percent growth. If the actual growth is higher than that and it drives our levy rate below a dollar fifty, we do start to lose our LEA funding at a rated share. So we want to make sure and hope that we stay above that dollar fifty.
Also, this is going to be a big push at the legislative level. This is, we're not alone here. There's districts in the valley that are below the one fifty now, and there'll be a, a solid push for a hold harmless thing there so we don't lose levy equalization. Okay, so I think we're almost to the end here. This is the last slide, so just capital projects, I wanted to make sure everybody, we wanted to talk about just where we're at as of twenty-two, twenty-three. You can see in the chart where the expenditures fell for that school year. There on the far right, you can see at the very bottom, a summary of the total fund balance at six million, five forty-five. That includes the three point seven million in the private donation, eight seventy-three, eight hundred seventy-three thousand in bond funds and one point nine in non-bond funds. And again, this was as of August thirty-one, twenty-three, and expenditures and revenues have been happening since that time. But this is where we ended the school year for the cap projects. All right, questions?
Welcome to the board, Derek. Yeah, right. Any, any questions? I, I had a, a, something that just kind of was clarified to me from that, from, I think, twenty-eighteen around McCleary decision to the current budget, there's been about a thirty percent increase in our overall, just the big number of it. But our staffing levels have stayed the same. And I think if I do the math right, that's, that increase in the budget is due almost entirely to the increase in teacher salaries or in, in salaries and benefits.
Compensation has been a huge.
Right, so the teachers are finally getting paid, this is me now talking, what, what they deserve to be paid. And that's a, that's driven a lot of the increase in our budget, almost all of it, it looks like, maybe even.
You think about eighty-four percent of our budget being people, and then you do pass through IPD increases in addition to what you're bargaining. But again, we're only passing through what we feel we can afford to. But yeah, you're right, that was, that's a high percentage of that.
Yeah, it's important to know that's not just, I, I know, Dan, where you, and which is our, also our largest group of employees is our teaching certificated staff, which includes more than teachers, counselors, so forth. But, but it is that, those salary compensation increases that make up that, that gradual or not gradual growth in, in the, in the budget are for all of the different employee groups. Everybody, everybody in one way, shape, or form has got a greater amount of compensation since two thousand and eight.
Great, thank you.
Okay, we have two other components of our report that are pretty quick. Kevin's probably like.
We said we were going to be fast tonight.
Sorry.
We're blowing my goal out of the water with regards to hour and a half board meetings, but that's okay. That means the next ones are going to be shorter.
Thing right along. So our enrollment, so December, you have this in, on the, the portal there for the board. You can see we just took a just slight dip from November to December, three point seven FTE. We're still sitting eight point four FTE over projection, more than that when you put in, when you throw in running start, because running starts running about, I think, just under fifty-one FTE. So, which is higher than what we projected for running start. So we're sitting good with our enrollment. We're still open district-wide to non-resident applications, so we're reviewing those in accordance with board policy thirty-one, forty-one. Other than that, that's where we're at with enrollment.
Hey, Chris?
Yeah.
The end of our financial report, we have slides related to the twenty-three, twenty-four budget work. Are we getting back to that, or are we?
Well, what, what we just, like Kevin mentioned at the beginning, we are, we have a full study session dedicated to this. So we decided tonight, let's just focus in on the year-end report, and then all of these things will be discussed in more detail.
This will be included in the actual report, these slides?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we felt it was important just to leave them in there for two purposes. One, they've already put in there when we, when we initially put this onto the attachment of the agenda. We didn't go back, want to go back and change things. We also felt that if you had the time and interest, you could study those slides and it may give you some better information as we prepare for the study session as well.
All right, and then our second piece here is the financial status report through October twenty-three. And just to provide a little more detail for Derek, since this is his first one of these, what this is, is a budget-to-actual view of where our, where we are in our budget. So on this report, there's the annual budget listed, and you'll see our sixty-four million dollars in revenue and projected sixty-six million dollars in expenditures, and that reflects the two point two million dollar deficit that we passed along with our budget back in August. And then we look at our revenues collected today and our expenditures that we've issued to date. So to date, we spent just over ten million dollars or received ten million dollars in revenue and spent about eleven point one million dollars in expenditures. And what we like to do is look at how far we are through the school year. So right now, as of October, we're about sixteen, seventeen percent of the way through the school year. And we look at that at revenues and expenditures. So revenues, we've received about fifteen point eight percent of our projected revenues, which is about on target. Couple of things there, if you look at the individual line items, you'll see we're ahead in some areas like our levy collection, which you'll see that come through usually in October and April. You'll see a big spike because that's when those tax payments come in. And then our apportionment will fluctuate usually with enrollment. Right now, we do receive our apportionment dollars through a, it's a pay schedule through OSPI. So different months, we earn a different percentage of our apportionment payments. Some are higher than others, so you'll see that go up and down compared to where we're at in the school year. And then federal funds, like this time of year, we're, we're lagging a bit, we're only at eight point six percent. But like Chris was talking about, a lot of those federal grants are reimbursable, but some of them aren't approved or fully processed for us to be able to go claim those revenues yet. So you're not seeing those come back to us yet. But we're pretty much right on target for our revenues expenditures. We're at sixteen point eight percent, which is right on track with where we're at in this school year. Our ending fund balance for general fund is about ten point one billion dollars as of the end of October. And then that second page or the back page of that, it goes through the other four funds that we have for ASB, debt service, transportation, and capital projects. You can kind of see where we're at. Fund balance-wise, we're at four hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars in ASB debt service. Kind of the same thing with our levy funds, you see, we've received about thirty-nine. Kind of the same thing with our levy funds. You see, we've received about thirty-nine percent of our projected revenues there. That's the same thing with our tax payment collections. So ending fund balance of three point three million dollars there. Transportation vehicle fund, not a lot of activity there yet. So four hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars in there. And then capital projects, six point nine million there. So you'll see some ins and outs on capital projects too.
That's the end of our report. Sorry.
Great. Thank you very much. I appreciate all the work that went into, we, I know the whole board appreciates all the work that goes into those reports and the careful management of the taxpayer dollars. So thank you, Chris and Stephanie for the detailed report this evening. Really appreciate it.
No.
Which leads us to the superintendent's report.
So I get to have one of the shortest reports. So I, I, just a couple of highlights and these may have fit into district highlights, but I thought I'd save them for something for me to say. First of all, Chris and I got the opportunity to tour the new Seela Food Bank today. We were toured by, by Bill Harris. And it was, it was incredible to see something that had been a dream and a goal in our community for so long and how they navigated through all the different parts of it and how they worked with the community center and the district for storage to actually see this facility and to see it stocked full of food and to see it ready to serve the community members was really, really cool. And so I would encourage you, whether it's individually or as a board, to go take, pay a visit to the food bank. I think you'll be very proud to have that type of a, a service within our community. It's also neat to hear all the stories of all the different groups of people, all the different churches that have been instrumental in bringing in significant amounts of food and all, all the relationships that they've built with all kinds of the different support and community support identities across our state and within the valley to make this thing come, come true. But it is really neat and it makes you feel good as well. So if you have that opportunity, I know Bill would be more than happy to tour you. He's pretty, he's pretty proud. Yeah.
Okay. And it was, Chris said, do you know where, remember the old, in the old, old building that was basically a football locker room area, but it was terrible. And that's where it was for years and then this came from and their dream and stuff. And that's the host of our backpack program.
Yep, it is. Yeah. Yes. The second thing is also one of the better parts of my job is that I get the opportunity to go and attend a lot of events. And so over the last few weeks, we've been a very event-rich over the last two weeks. We have events almost every night of some sort. And so I've got the opportunity to be a part of a, an observe holiday programs, concerts, athletic events and just other general events for this time of the year. I got to be the conductor in the Polar Express and welcome families to SIS, which was really incredible. And kids would say, well, you kind of look like that person, but you don't have a mustache, you know? And, and so those are, those are really part, better parts of, of what I get to do. And I, I I know that many of you have attended those as well. And, and you see great joy and to put smiles on your face seeing our students in, in performance or competition or just in the schools outside of their regular school day for things that they do. It also provides insight into the talent that our students have. There's some incredible talents. The musical talents that I saw last night and the night before with the choir concert and high school band concert are, they're incredible. They're very, very talented students and we have those in our athletic programs and other, other programs as well. So those will, I think we may have missed the middle school concert tonight, but I, this will continue not only in the remainder of December, but into January and February. If there, if you're looking for something to do, there will be something for you to take up your time in the evening. Speaking of January, these are district level events. Many of these I share with you already, but just kind of a review since we're in an open public meeting. Community collaboration on the tenth of January, the topic is harassment, intimidation and bullying. It's really aimed at parents to educate them on what, what it is, what our policy says and what they can do in specific cases. We have a study session that following morning on the eleventh. Board study session, as we talked about tonight, it's the budget update. Remember that those are seven AM, it'll be right here. And those are the ones that we have to be out by eight-thirty. So you guys can all go and do your other responsibilities. The fifteenth brings Martin Luther King holiday, no school on that Monday. The seventeenth is our next round of our facility committee. This facility committee, this will be meeting number four, I mean, number four of that committee. And the committee has, has asked that they get a tour of the high school. And so they're going to go see the, the insides of the high school and be able to see some of the challenges that that facility presents. I'm glad, I'm glad Chris brought that information with regards to the capital project fund and our debt capacity. I want to, I want to be clear that the work we're doing there i- is only to update the plan. It is not to set the district up for a few, a bond issue in the next coming years. That, that's never crossed any of our mind. If you were able to study and look at the data with regards to our debt capacity and our, and our debt in general, it'd be very difficult for, for me or Chris to recommend any additional taxes in the future or additional bond. I know when, when districts bring their facility committee back together, that may be an action in the future, but it's not an action that we expect in the near future. It probably realistically within ten years, if not fifteen or so. Just so you know that from me, I, that may be a topic that you begin to hear more about. Now, it doesn't mean that we can't look at individual things that need attention with regards to our facilities and try to figure out ways to address them. We have a very generous donation of three point seven million there. And, and I think that deserves some attention by the district to try to figure out a, a way to, to leverage those dollars and, and see that that donation and the generosity of that individual and the family comes to, comes to some sort of fruition. So we then return to as a regular board meeting on the twenty-fifth. Also for Chris and I and, and Stephanie's work, i- this is an important time in January because the Washington State Legislature starts their convening. They'll convene on the eighth of January. It's a short session this year. We need, it's part of their supplemental budget. But I'll, I'll guarantee there will be things that come out of this session that will surprise us. And they'll either surprise us in a good, positive way, or they'll surprise us in a, in a very challenging and difficult way. So even though it's in a short, short session, it is an election year for, I believe, all the members of the House. And so there is a lot of campaign promises trying to be accomplished during this year. And so there will be things, I will guarantee. And so Chris and I and Stephanie and others on the cabinet consider these things. We've, are all engaged in the legislative actions going on in Olympia. And when we see things happening that are going to have an impact on our district, we will bring them to you so you know what can expect. And then at the end of the session, when decisions have been made, we will bring that report to you as well. That is my report. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Kevin. Any questions for Kevin on his report? We come to the part of the meeting now, the board communications is the chance for board members to bring up topics that they think are important for the public to know about. Any comments from the board?
I'll just add that I did get a chance to head down to the, the new food bank. I actually got to participate in moving from the old down at the, at the civic center. If you hadn't, haven't, haven't seen that, it was not ideal. So that facility is amazing. And I really think that it's important that everyone of us gets down there. They're very proud of the work, the, the folks that run it, that work there. I I mean, you're just the amount of, I don't, they're so proud and it makes me proud and I'm glad that our community stepped up and made it happen.
Thank you, Sarah. Any other comments?
I'd like to add that if you guys do decide to go down there as a board, the student reps would be really, we would love to be included in that.
Thank you, Indy. I'll, I'll just finish up by, with a couple of quick notes. First of all, it's going to be tough to fill Courtney Peart's spot at the high school and sometimes these HR sheets come by and you see a name and it just feels like we should recognize the contributions that they've made. And Courtney is certainly one of those people that's going to live, leave a big hole, but also a real legacy at Seela. So I, I want her to know how much the board appreciates the, the hours and hours and hours of work and energy that she's put into our students. She really has changed lives for many students. I, I want to make sure to welcome Derek Iverson to the board and to congratulate Sarah on her reelection to the board. I'm excited to serve with everyone on the board and especially with those of us who have been newly elected. And I'm, I, I don't know if humbled is the right word by the trust that the board has put in me to be the president of the board. I am feel also like I'm jumping on a grenade a little bit as well, but I, I'll, I'll take it as, as trust that you have in me, the board members and, and I definitely am humbled by the community members who voted for me and voted for us in this election. And I, I want to let people know that as a president, I'm, I'm committed to continue in the tradition of past presidents of the Seela School Board, especially Jeff Hartwick, to listen and to learn and to study and to be a steady and empathetic leader. I, I think of my, my, my dad and my mom especially as servant leaders. And so I hope I can continue and, and make them proud in this, in this role. I, I, I think for me, the big picture is to make sure that students are ready for the future. There's a, a quote that I've heard that I keep repeating to myself that what we need is a community where people feel connected, protected and respected. And I think that's really important for students and staff in our community. And I, I feel like when you go to these events that Kevin went to and that we all go to outside, we get a sense of how healthy this community is in many different ways where we do have people who feel seen, who feel respected and connected. And I, I just want to continue in that tradition. And I'm excited to get to work with the board in the new year. So thank you. And I think that's it. If anybody else has anything else they want to add?
On behalf of all of our, all of our students, our parents and all of our staff and us here at the table, we'd like to wish all of you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and our student reps as well and those in the audience as well. It's an important time of the year. I know all of us have plans specifically with friends and family. And that's what it's about as, as well as all of the religious parts of that as well. So Merry Christmas to each of you and Happy New Year as well.
Thank you, Kevin. Do I need a motion to adjourn or do we just say? Well, it's, you know, what really bugs me is that of the one things that I'm continuing in Jeff's tradition is banging us out after two and a half hours of being here. So all right, this meeting is now adjourned.